So I'll welcome you all and ask if you would like to, to please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, please be with us tonight as decisions are made and discussions are held. Help us to understand what's being discussed and to listen to one another, to be kind and to be patient throughout our meeting. In your name we ask this, Lord. Amen. And I do believe we can call the meeting to order now at 7:01. And I'll ask you to join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devin, would you take roll call, please?
Mike Connel, Chad Fuller.
Here.
Mindy Galbely.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Swannan.
Here.
All council members except council member Mike Connel.
And Mike did tell me a couple of days ago that he wouldn't be able to be here tonight. Looking now for approval of our agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as per.
Second.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And looking now for reading and approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the January 19th, 2023 regular meeting. Second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I don't believe we have any pre-approved reports or presentations, so we'll move to public comment. Anyone here for public comment? No. See anybody, so we'll move into communications. Devin, you're up.
I can wait for my report. I don't have any communications.
Okay, then we will pass on that. Mayor and department head reports. Megan couldn't be here tonight, and she did give me a report, which I will read on her behalf. The treasurer is reminding us to, a reminder to taxpayers that any outstanding winter 2022 tax bills are due without penalty at our office by February 14th. Late payments can be made at our office until February 28th with a 3% penalty. After this date, all payments must be made with the county treasurer. Dog licenses are also available at City Hall through the end of this month, month of February. Megan says that she's been working on the 2022-23 budget projections to help us prepare for our department head 23-24 budget planning meetings in the near future, and we appreciate her doing that. She has been exploring CD rates at various banking institutions and plans to allocate some fund reserves into higher yielding CDs rather than standard checking accounts prior to the end of this month. And we're still awaiting word on the outcome of our Spark grant application. Results are to be announced sometime early February, so any day now. And that is our report from Megan. Kevin, do you have a report?
Sure. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hi, Kevin. Pretty much business as usual during the month of January. We started doing our regular wintertime maintenance on equipment at the DPW garage, going through the mowers and making sure everything's up in good working order for the upcoming seasons. We've also been cleaning, organizing the shop, keeping the guys busy during the cold, the cold times, built some shelving and, you know, just trying to make it look more presentable. We've had to do some Christmas tree collection. People set out, collect those, put them back on the brush piles. We had our generators PM'd and serviced, both the standby generator at the water treatment plant and the trailer unit. They had oil changes, had some changes to the programming done, and just an overall check and inspection. Everything's good to go with those. We did a little earlier this year so that we could have those changes done. Typically, it's done later in the spring, right before storm season starts, but there was a need for it, so we went ahead and got that taken care of. They actually did us a favor by coming in early and not trying to give us a service call, so that was nice of them, the incumbents to do that for us. We had one main break at Rolf and Madison. It was a small break. Took us about four hours to get that cleaned up. Done a couple rounds of snow plowing, four to five times out in salt. I'm guessing we've used 20 to 30% of our salt usage, our allotment for the year. We still have 50 tons on reserve that we could order if needed, so I think we're in good shape with our snow plowing, road clearing. Did some maintenance out at the water treatment plant. We replaced the high-service pumps, the chlorine pumps, basically mixes the water, sends it to the distribution system. And that was done for efficiency and reliability. The old ones have been in service for quite some time. So we stocked those away, put them on a shelf for backups, and we'll keep them handy if needed, but I think we're in pretty good shape, so. Other than that, if Ash Flint would stop causing this problem with leaving tree branches down all over the place, I think we're doing pretty good at the DPW side of things, so. Any questions from any of you? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, everybody.
Kayla?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I have a brief report. We have accepted from the Office of Highway Safety Planning overtime traffic enforcement money, thanks to the Chiawasi County Sheriff's Office. They put in for it at their level and then asked for other departments to participate. And Owasso and Perry are the only departments who put in for it, but the guys are taking advantage of overtime opportunities through that grant. So you might see a couple cars on, which is not typical for us, but you'll probably see some overlap, maybe two cars out at about the same time in the U means, and it would be because of that grant, if you see that. It is a reimbursement grant, so every quarter we'll put in for the hours worked, and then I have no idea of the timeframe to get the money back from the feds, but certainly not holding my breath. It is there, and looking forward to utilizing that. Next week, I will be attending the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police Winter Conference, which will be held in Grand Rapids, and I'll be gone for three days, going through conferences, seminars through that. I did attend last week with all three building principals of the district, including one of the counselors, in advanced behavioral threat assessment training, which is done through the Michigan Office of School Safety. And this program, we kind of all chuckled, to be honest, because we've been doing a lot of this. I've been doing, working with the schools. I'll sit in with them as they roll around potential problems they have with students and how far to take it and what they should do with it. And I'm grateful that they've included me on that, so I've learned a lot on their end, and they've learned a lot from me on how we should proceed. But this is not cookie cutter approach, but it is a good foundation for us to approach threats and comments that are made, behavioral type things that could escalate or potentially be a problem. But it's a really good map for us to utilize and almost a step-by-step process. So that was very worthwhile. I was glad to be a part of that. And last but not least, as you folks know and have approved, we switched our report writing system over back in December. The new system seems to be going well. We're learning it. All the bugs aren't out, but the bugs are on our part, not the software side. But we do have to have access to our previous records. The other database we had was housed, all our records and data were housed in Lansing. Essentially, I have to not purchase the data, but purchase the means and the software to access the data. So they control the tunnel, just not the information going through the tunnel, I guess. So I have purchased a fairly inexpensive desktop, and it has to be a standalone desktop, Windows 10, no upgrades or anything like that, because once the company puts the software on it, it can't out-update what the software is that's loaded on it. But it will be the only thing on that desktop, so I don't expect the need to upgrade it at all. But it is going to cost over the allotted amount that I can approve, so I'll probably come to you next month with those numbers, and we'll get that set up, probably up where the secretary used to sit, and then we'll just be able to pull up our old reports and look up all the information that we've archived over the last 15-plus years on that software database. So, other than that, I don't have anything else for you folks. Do you have anything for me?
Anybody? For call.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Devin?
I gave you a few items when you walked in. First of all, last year, when the contract came up for our IT Right service, IT service, council asked that we go out for bids to just make sure that we were getting the best price for our product. We're also now running into a few hip-ups because they branch out to VC3, so we're looking for VC3 to hopefully get their act together and get some options at the same time. So you can find the RFP on our website to view, but I've also given you a copy of it. We went through the technology committee, had a conversation with them. Their recommendation was, don't leave this open too long. It'll just sit there, either people are going to apply or they're not going to apply for We had one person, when I reached out, that wanted to know if they could do a walkthrough. So along with your RFP, you're going to see addendum. The way we have it set up, they have any questions to ask by February 3rd, and then February 6th, all the addendums will be included and will be offered to them. Reached out by email, all the way through Chiawasi County, to get some input on everyone's IT service. And with that information, the majority of them were with VC3, IT Right, as we also know that, or with Chiawasi RASD. There are only a few municipalities that were using different companies. I've reached out to approximately nine different ones by phone or email, and six have confirmed they'll be submitting a proposal by the deadline. Those companies are Adaptive Technologies, Michigan Network Consultants, PC Solutions, Gray Concerns, Detech Solutions, and VC3 are the ones that we reached out to. Do you have any questions about that?
You said DC3 is the IT Right, just changed names or whatever?
Yep.
Make sure I heard that correctly.
Yep. If there's no questions, the next one item that I wanted to talk to you about is natural gas supplier. The city has been getting their natural gas supply from an outside source since 2011. We've been with Volunteer Energy for years, and they've had to file bankruptcy, and they went under. While that happened, we went back to consumers, and then because of the bankruptcy agreement, we were under Direct Energy. As I followed and watched the numbers, they're keeping up with consumer energy prices, just a little below, but we were approached by another company. The company is Navigate Power, and I've been working with Jeff Appleton. Now Jeff Appleton from Navigate Power is the original gentleman that reached out to me from Volunteer Energy back in 2011. So due to that company closing down, as experience, he's now went somewhere else. So he has asked, suggested that we use Symmetry Energy Solutions. They are out of Grand Rapids. So that's what is on the agenda tonight, and there's two contracts. The reason for two contracts is, the first one he proposed was at $4.99 for 24 months, but there was termination fees that I asked the mayor to read, and she caught that, and I'm like, we've never had termination fees. So I went back to him and I talked to him. One of the things he said is that we were a large commercial, and I was surprised by that. So what change that you have in front of you now is it's two contracts, and it has to be, the supply has to be 300 or less, and that's why there's two contracts. So he was able to make it at a small commercial, bring it down, and that allowed it no early termination fees. Jeff is guaranteeing that he will annually check rates, and if it needs to be smaller than that, contract can be redone. But in the meantime, from the time that I've gotten it to our city attorney, have him redo, review the contract for wording, and Justin has given his blessing on that, in the last, what, yesterday I gave to that paper? It's been lowered to $4.35. And right now, Direct Energy for January came in for natural gas, $6.22, and Consumers was coming in at $6.26. I have made sure that I've looked across the board. There are several companies supplying natural gas. And so when we get down there to consider, I did, I don't believe I've changed the motion for the dollar amount, and I don't have a new contract. It was that quick. So if you want to change the motion once we get down there to consider that, feel free. I'm doing that. The next thing is ordinances. The ordinance committee, as you all know, has been working really hard on a lot of things, and in order for me to keep up, I like colors, so I'm sharing my colors with you. And at this meeting, the plan is to possibly adopt ordinance 370, because it's already had a first reading. And then we have a first reading tonight with 374. And as you can see, I have that in blue. They're going to council, so you can kind of follow me there. February 16th meeting, the plan will be to add, I believe there's short enough ordinances, like a one-pager, ordinance number 371, which is a zoning ordinance amendment, and then 372, which is a repeal, so it'll only be a couple sentences, which will be very simple. And then 375. Is that legitimate? Which one is that one? Oh, sidetracks. Sidetracks. Okay. So the plan is to have those on the next agenda, and then at the March 2nd meeting, the plan is to have ordinance 373 and 376 at their first reading to get them approved. So all of your blue will be in motion by the first meeting in March, and then there might be more coming at that point, because the ordinance committee continues to keep working on stuff. Is there any questions on what I gave you? And the committee does all the work, and then they give me the rough drafts, and then I get them pretty, and then I send to Justin, and he makes sure they're correct, is how our system works. And so they're working so hard on so many things, the color coding was the only way I was able to keep up with them. So if there's no questions on that, there's one more item that I want to discuss with you. I gave you some items regarding the Plugs Fund. As you all know, this past, at the November election, I bring the subject up because a resolution will need to come before council each year to state how much of a millage will be put to the July 1st taxes. And it's my opinion that this resolution should be adopted no later than the last meeting in April, because we'll have to put it on our L4029 that goes to the county in order to get that on there. Justin is aware, he's the one that recommended you would need to make a resolution, and he promised that he would make us one to be accordingly, as soon as you guys let us know what you would decide to do with it, of how much of the millage. What this millage is, is it's .1 is the max. You don't have to ask the community for that, but you can. So that's the reason for it. There wasn't an amount set, there was a max up there. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Devin about any of the information she's presented to us?
Well, I appreciate her color coding.
Moving on then to committee reports. Who has a committee report they'd like to present?
Just to follow up on Devin's report, I'll let everybody know that our next regularly scheduled ordinance committee meeting will be Thursday, March the night, at 10:00 a.m. here in Council Chambers. It looks like by the time we have that meeting, a lot of the blue will have moved on, and we'll have to put some more on the list. No, we do have a couple of others that we are, are working on, are getting close to being ready to bring a proposal forward to Devin's review and activity. We had some discussion at our last meeting with regard to our pet ordinance that we have on the books currently, and we're going to propose a few tweaks to that, as well as some others. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Larry. Any other committees?
The Parks next meeting is scheduled for February 20th. That's Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. right here at Council Chambers. It's open. I would advise, you know, residents to come in if they're available to see what's going on. Hopefully by that time, we'll know if we got approved for that grant. I'm hoping and praying that we do, because that would be really good. But that's all I have for mine.
And that's the Sparks grant?
The Sparks, yes, that's Sparks grant. Go.
That would be awesome. Any other committees? No other reports. We'll move on then to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bill as presented and the payment be authorized.
Second.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We have no old business that's carried forward, so we'll move into new business. And our attorney is here. We have some discussions that we need to do, so I'm looking for a motion to move into closed session.
I move that council will go into a closed session to discuss attorney-client communication. Second.
We have a motion from Steve. Oh, I'm sorry, that needs to be roll call. Devin, roll call, please. Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Bob Porter?
Yes.
Larry Lambert?
Yes.
Mindy Galbely?
Yes.
Chad Fuller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. We'll move into closed session now at 7:26, and because we outnumber everybody else, Kevin and our illustrious videographer, if you guys could go out to the hallway, let me know where we're at.
Ready.
Looking now for motion to go back into regular session?
Second.
I'm looking for. Oh, I'm sorry.
That was nice.
I motioned, I motioned that we go back into regular session. Sorry.
A second.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Larry, to go back into regular session, and all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. Yep. She even printed it right here, so I would remember. Thank you, Bob. Mindy Galbely?
Yes.
Larry Lambert?
Yes.
Bob Porter?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Chad Fuller?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's carrying. Returning to regular session at 8:16 p.m. Our next agenda item is possible adoption of ordinance amendment number 370 regarding noise.
Any comments or questions from the reading last time? We got one minor modification to, I covered with Devin, to what was in our handout, and that is under Point H, and she's already revised it. Instead of in parentheses, needs reference to state law on the July 4th exceptions, it will basically reference ordinance 692.01 for exceptions, which is the fireworks one that will be read later tonight.
You ad-libbed that kind of the last time.
Exactly.
And I still misunderstood, and I apologize for that. I tried to mess it up, so we're going to get it right before it goes in the paper.
Having said that, I move that ordinance number 370 regarding noise, which was read at the July 19th council meeting, be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on then to possible adoption of poverty exemption, Resolution 2023. I believe that's on your act. We have to do this, or we do do this every year.
I move that we accept the adoption of the 2023 poverty exception, exception, exemption, sorry. Resolution as presented, which includes the federal poverty guidelines used in the determination of poverty exemptions.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Moving on to our next agenda item, and that is in regard to the possible approval of the natural gas supplier contract, and Devin spoke to that earlier. If you have thought of any questions you might have for her, now would be the time.
You said the rate, Devin, would be $4.35?
Yes, and that's the email that I gave you tonight to see that, but I do not, I do not have the contract in front. I will guarantee that they're word for word, and that's the only change before I will sign it.
I move that we approve the contracts for the city's commercial gas supplier between Symmetry Energy and the city of Perry, which states that it will be a fixed rate at $4.35 for 24 months, and authorize the city clerk to sign the same on behalf of the city. Second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is in relation to personnel policy amendment. Mindy gave a report from the Personnel Committee, gosh, about a month ago now. We did hear that report and needed to make a change in the personnel. We did hear that report and needed to make a change in the personnel policy in order to act on the Personnel Committee's recommendation. And this is a result of that.
Is there any questions on that? The, you don't have to read the personnel policy or it says language added. It will be in italics and underlined. And that was just a reference, the city attorney giving his input on actual menu policy. There doesn't seem to be any strictures, they all seem to be additions, underlined.
I move that we approve the following amendments to the personnel policy for the city of Perry employees, except for those covered by a master contract, which is negotiated with a recognized union or labor group, and with the understanding that this policy will be effective February 15th, 2023.
Second. We have a motion from Larry seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We're now moving on to a possible first reading of the ordinance to repeal number 378 regarding LOCC Section 280.07. Larry, you want to speak to that at all?
Sure, I can briefly. Basically, Local Officers' Compensation Committee and this particular section 280.07 was added after the original Local Officers' Compensation Committee ordinance was put in place. And fundamentally, in that ordinance, it stated that any additions or modifications after one year from the adoption of that ordinance needed to be treated as a charter amendment and therefore would have to go to the voters. 280.07 basically was handled as just a routine ordinance revision. And therefore, after discussions with Justin, he concurred that it was an invalid ordinance adjustment. Fundamentally, to back up then, the Local Officers' Compensation Committee, since it's an independent group from the council or any of the other appointed positions, does not have to abide by any particular timeline in terms of when they would implement or any modifications to compensation would be implemented. That's kind of the background as to why we're moving forward to repeal. Any comments, questions? I move that the Local Officers' Compensation Commission, Section 2.07, 280.07, ordinance number 378 be repealed, which reads as follows and be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The city of Perry ordains Perry City Code Section 280.07 is hereby repealed. This repeal ordinance will be effective 30 days after publication.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Possible first reading of ordinance amendment number 374 regarding fireworks. We may have to tag team on this reading.
I will start, but are there any questions before I start? And this is really an outgrowth, once again, of the Ordinance Committee. And we looked at the noise ordinance and then said we need to look at how it relates to our fireworks ordinance. I went back, or we went back and found the state requirements that exist for fireworks in terms of when they're, the state says you must allow those in our local ordinance. And rather than delete some that we already had on the books, the Ordinance Committee elected to add those in that weren't already in our ordinance. And also, we then adjusted the state required times to match our times, which are a little bit more lenient than what they would have otherwise required. Comments, questions before I start? I move that ordinance number 374 regarding fireworks, and which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The city of Perry ordains Perry City Code Section 692.01A, 8 and F is amended and substituted as follows. 692.01 fireworks, A, definitions as used in this section. Number 8, national holiday is a New Year's Day. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, President's Day, also referred to as Washington's birthday, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. F, consumer fireworks prohibitions. 1, persons shall not ignite, discharge, or use consumer fireworks except during permitted hours on the days as defined in the preceding, the day of, or the day after a national holiday, except as defined in the table. We need to read the whole table. Okay.
She already asked.
Perry ordinance allows, allowed times not to be allowed from 1:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. Therefore, before, day before New Year's Day, New Year's Day, and day after are all 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Day after, Martin Luther King Day, and the day after, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. are allowed. Day before President's Day, day after President, President's Day, and the day after, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. The Saturday and Sunday before Memorial Day and the day after Memorial Day, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Day before Juneteenth Day and the day after Juneteenth Day, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. June 29th, June 30th, July 1st, July 2nd, and the day before Independence Day and the day after Independence Day, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. The Saturday before, Sunday before Labor Day, as well as Labor Day, and the day after Labor Day, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. The day before Columbus Day, Columbus Day, the day after, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. The day before Veterans Day, on Veterans Day, and the day after Veterans Day, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. The day before Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving Day, and the day after Thanksgiving, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. The day before Christmas, Christmas Day, and the day after, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. 2, no person shall ignite, discharge, or use consumer fireworks on public property, school property, church property, or other properties of another person without that organization's or person's express permission to use consumer fireworks on those premises. 3, consumers' fireworks shall not be ignited, discharged, or used by a minor. 4, any person who violates 692.01F shall be responsible for a municipal civil infraction punishable by a fine of $1,000 for each violation of the ordinance and no other fine or sanction. The remittance of $500 of the fine collected is directed to the local law enforcement agency responsible for enforcing the ordinance, referencing Michigan Compaia Law, Section 28.457. This ordinance will take effect 30 days from the data, 30 days from the date of publication.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry seconded by Chad. And all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. And thank you, Ordinance Committee, again, for all of your work in preparing all of this very detailed. It's, it's really wonderful that we're getting all of these ordinances cleared. So thank you very much. On our agenda, we have the agenda item, possible approval to obtain Miller Canfield for legal counsel. Shall we have discussion regarding that?
I believe we have no action taken.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob seconded by Steve.
I don't know how to do that. Just no action taken.
So just no action taken.
I'll rescind my second.
There'll be no action taken on this agenda item.
Something better.
Just being honest, I was like, oh, no.
Do we have any other business that may come before council at this time? Any other public comment? Council discussions or observations you'd like to make? Agenda items for the next meeting? Other than what we've just talked about?
Yes, we have possible adoption of the ordinance repeal number 378. Possible adoption of ordinance amendment 374. And then the possible approval to obtain legal.
Any redacts have anything?
What about the Parks Millage thing?
Do you want that as a discussion? Do you want that as a discussion at the next meeting?
I thought it was, since we got it got passed, it was like a done deal. But would you do anything more for that?
Yes, I'd have to get, Justin said that you should be, have a formal resolution to do that. And then whether you do the max or less, it should be in there. The difference is, is because you made it, could be a max of the 1, .1. And like SADA, SADA is also a max of .25. The difference is, is that that one was passed according to, and it, the millage is according to the invoice we've received. This one has nothing. So each year, you guys will have to, by resolution, determine.
What the rate will be for that year.
What the rate will be for each year.
Okay. I think that should go on the agenda.
So let's put that on the agenda for the next item to discuss and possibly set that rate.
Yes.
Anything else? Meeting adjourned.
8:32.